Good evening and welcome back to night two of the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forums for the 2022 primary elections on July 19th. The forums have been made possible by Allegheny Media and WFWM. I am Julie McCoy, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank Jeremy Irons, the Chairman of our Chamber's Legislative Committee for moderating last evening's forums and for helping this evening. We are pleased to use technology to make these forums available virtually in addition to in-person. Tonight, we will hear from the candidates running for District One Senate and County Commissioner, and second, we have county commissioners. There's a total of six Republican candidates that will be reduced to three following the primary. With us are incumbent Dave Capirelli and challengers Bill Atkinson, Jonathan Dayton, Todd Logston, and David Robison. All candidates will be given the same questions and have the same amount of time to answer. We will provide a 20-second notice as time is expiring, and we will alternate which candidate answers first. Questions were formulated based on work and priorities of the chamber with input from the general membership and have not been shared with the candidates in advance. Let's begin. Bill, we'll start with you. Please tell us about yourself and what qualifies you to serve as a Commissioner for Allegheny County. This is a two-minute question.
First, I want to thank you, Julie, and Mr. Irons for putting this on from the Chamber, Allegheny Media for being able to present this to anyone who wants to watch it, WFWM for putting it all together also. Why am I running and how do I qualify? I am a lifelong Republican and a lifelong resident of Allegheny County. I grew up in the Frostburg area. My family is from the Georgia's Creek area, but I currently now live just outside of Cumberland. I went to Bell High School, graduated from there in 1978, and graduated then from Frostburg State University. Spent three years of my professional career working for the city of Frostburg as their Development Coordinator and was instrumental in getting funding to redo Main Street. Many of you remember years and years ago, the sidewalks were three times larger than they are now, and you couldn't get out of your car without getting taken the door off. We were able to redesign that, and I was able to lead that project. And then I spent 30 years with the state of Maryland with the Maryland Department of Planning. The last five years of that, I was with the Appalachian Regional Commission as the Program Manager for the state of Maryland in seeing how those funding that we get from the federal government was able to be spent across the three western Maryland counties. I retired about two and a half years ago. Worked tirelessly when I was with the state. We had a motto that was, "You get things done because it's the right thing to do," and I want to bring that to the county commissioners. I think we need to look at, "How are we moving forward and how can we move forward a little quicker than we have?" I worked from within government, so I understand how government works from the inside out. With that, I hope to bring that passion that I had when I retired. I was sitting around thinking of what else was the next step and what was I going to do next, and I found that I still kind of had this passion for trying to make a difference, for trying to make this a better area. My wife backed me 100% and told me that if that's what you want to do and that's your passion, you need to go for it, and you need to finish what you started on some of these projects, and you need to move some things forward that we think we can do. So with that, I will be retired while I'm at this job, so I will be putting in full-time service to the citizens of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, Allegheny Media, and Jeremy for moderating and hosting tonight's session. My name is Jonathan Dayton. I'm a lifelong resident of Allegheny County. I can't say that I was born and raised here, but I was adopted at the age of four months. I grew up on the Crick. I grew up in western Port Maryland. I went to school at Mountain Ridge High School, graduated there, and then went on to Frostburg State University where I graduated with a degree in pre-medicine and psychology and also have a master's degree in management leadership. A little bit about why I think I qualify for the county commissioner seat, but also reasons I want to serve. I'm also a firefighter EMT and fire policeman for the sheriff's office. Public service is in my blood. When I see an opportunity to make a difference in the community, I jump all over that, and I truly believe that I can bring some expertise to the Board of County Commissioners. A little bit more background about myself. I do have a stint in government. I've served on the Maryland Youth Advisory Council for two terms, appointed by the Speaker of the House. I worked downstate in Annapolis for several years in the Crownsville area, testifying in both the Senate and House committees on a lot of youth-related legislation. So I do know how government works. My daytime job is an executive director or a healthcare executive. I'm working in a rural health nonprofit. I have experience and expertise working on rather large healthcare budgets, working with monies that go across the state. In addition, I also serve on other, two other statewide committees, one as the Advisory Council for Health and Wellness and one as the Governors Emergency Management Council. And I truly want Allegheny County to thrive. I want the citizens and I want the people that are in my generation to have an area where they can live, work, and play in a safe manner, and I want us to continue to put Allegheny County first and put us on the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
I almost forget to hit the button. Thank you for hosting us tonight. My name's Dave Capirelli. I'm currently a county commissioner for Allegheny County. I am a graduate of Bishop Walsh High School and Frostburg State University. While I was at Frostburg, I was involved with the College Republicans, and a few years went by, and I was appointed to the Central Committee, and I stayed on there for two terms, the Republican Central Committee. If I'm re-elected, this would be my fourth term in public service, so I know what it takes to get involved and be involved in moving government forward. I'm also a member of the Alhambra and the Laval Lions, and I run our family business, Capirelli's Bakery, that's been in our community for 116 years. I'm married to my wife Melissa, been together for almost 15 years now. We have two children, Michael and Julia. And like I said, I feel that my time in office qualifies me and the things that we've accomplished during my term to seek a second term. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Hello, everyone. My name's Todd Logston, another lifelong resident of Allegheny County. I was born at Memorial Hospital and have grown up in Frostburg. I attended Allegheny County Public Schools and then went on to Frostburg State University where I received two degrees. One is a bachelor's degree in political science with a concentration in public administration, so the inner workings of the day-to-day operations of government. And then I received a master's degree in secondary education. I'm currently employed as a teacher at Mountain Ridge High School. I've been doing that for about five years. I have extensive work history in both the private sector and the public sector. I've worked for large businesses. I've worked for small businesses. I've worked for the government, so I have experience in tying all of those facets together and in serving the interests of both the public sector and the private sector. I'm a member of quite a number of civic clubs. As my wife will tell you, I'm hardly ever home because I'm either going to Lions Club this night, or Masonic Lodge this night, or a, you know, something with the Frostburg Fire Department where I volunteer. I'm a third-generation volunteer firefighter here in Allegheny County. And the reason that I'm running for Allegheny County Commissioner and the reason I feel that I'm qualified is because I have the passion and the commitment and the love for Allegheny County that all of us have, and we all want to see the success that Allegheny County has had in the past and the other areas of the state have had. We want to see our area succeed so that, you know, our family, our friends that come here and that have grown up here are able to stay and are able to succeed, and that Allegheny County's future can be as bright as its past was.
Thanks so much. David?
I'd first like to thank the Chamber and the ACC for having us here this evening. My name is David Robison. I'm a lifelong resident of Allegheny County for 30-some years. I was born in Garrett County and went to Valley High School and attended and graduated from Valley High School. The reason I think I qualify, for four years ago, I ran for county commission. I think I had some interesting and brought some new ideas and concepts to the table about job placement, job training, and stuff like that, which has came to fruition since then. I'll still have some ideas, and I think my business management, my own business, I am now self-employed businessman. I ran a very successful business for 30-some years in the city of Carmel until the economic turns turned us down. And that's my qualifications, and I think my business aspect, working with numbers, and understanding that the county is a business and it needs to be ran like a business. This county is ran at taxpayers' expense, and we need to share this expense with the taxpayers and bring the understanding of what the taxpayers' expense is doing. Thank you.
Thanks so much. We'll start the questions with Mr. Atkinson, and then we'll alternate as we go. This is the first official question, and it is a one-minute answer. Aside from jobs and economic growth, what is most important and essential to the citizens of Allegheny County?
The most important, I think, is the sense of community that we have. I was lucky enough, when I was ARC Program Manager, to travel across the 13 Appalachian states. I got to see how other communities were doing, what they had at their disposal as far as their assets, what we have compared to that. What I found was, there's such a great sense of community here, and we take it for granted, but it isn't like that everywhere. The people that take care of each other in this county, the way that we look out for each other, that you don't find that everywhere, and I think that's one of the essential things that we need to be able to push forward in our economic endeavors, that we are a good place to be. We have lots of great assets. We have great outdoor recreational facilities, and I think between all of that, that we should be looking at a positive attitude. We all have said it here, and we'll say it all the time, we all love this place. We love where we live, and I think if you love where you live, then it's easy to bring other people to the area, and we need to convince our citizens that this is the greatest place to live and work and to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
It's a great question. Public safety. Public safety is not only a passion of mine, but I truly think it's the most important and essential to the citizens of Allegheny County, and there are really several reasons. Safe streets and safe neighborhoods. Just back 10, 15 years ago, you could keep your door open at your house and not worry about someone walking in. Nowadays, it's not that similar and the same. Public safety, meaning safe streets, safe EMS, the proper fire departments in your neighborhoods, truly drives economic development and jobs. People want to see safe neighborhoods and a safe community. All of that surrounds bringing economic development to our area. It brings more families to our area. It brings our generation and my generation to want to stay, work, live, and go to school in our area, and it also drives business as well. And that's the reason why I truly believe that public safety is one of the most essential things to the citizens of Allegheny County.
Thanks so much. Dave?
I was going to bring up two things, actually. Broadband and housing. Broadband, I think we really found out during COVID, particularly with schooling and et cetera, where a lot of the pockets were that weren't getting good broadband. A lot of the funding that we've had through the county for federal funding, we have put up new towers and trying to fill in those gaps. As a result of that, we've also seen a lot, an influx of people moving to our area that can work remotely now. So we need to have broadband accessible to those people, and that's how I tie housing into that also. The housing market has been really hot over in the past couple of years in the area. We need new housing, adequate housing. We still have a senior housing aspect that we need to address, and I think that more projects like the Foot or Die Works, where we have working professionals that may or may not be ready to set up roots in the area, but may work at Northrop Grumman, the hospital, places like that. So I think tying broadband and housing together are two of the most important things that I want to contribute.
Thank you. Todd?
All of the issues that have been talked about so far are important issues, and I would add to that, transportation. The critical improvements to transportation that are overdue to this area that other areas of the state enjoy, whether it's surface transportation in the form of a north-south highway. We see that beginning to finally come to fruition on Route 219, and even though that's in Garrett County, that will provide a good economic boost to Allegheny County. We've talked for years and years about doing the same thing to 220, both on the north side going up towards Bedford and on the southern side going down to Kaiser. So improving surface transportation, improving access to rail, especially passenger rail. We've talked about before, one of the things to attract people to telework is broadband access, but it's also access to the city. So while people aren't necessarily going to commute from Cumberland to Washington every day, that is an asset that needs to be there. Surface transportation, rail, those are assets that will help.
Great. Thank you. David?
One of the most important things, I think, that are the constituents that I've talked to first is education. Our education system needs to be upped a little bit. I mean, when you talk to some of the employers who's trying to employ people for lack of education and the ability of education they bring to it, is one of the most important things that the constituents is looking at and listening to, especially if you're an employer in this area trying to employ people. Another thing is, like Dave said, is the senior housing. You know, there's been, I don't know how many people I've talked to, and when I've been out on streets inquiring about the Chase property and what's going on, is, are we going to have a senior housing, an affordable senior housing? And do we have a tax base of seniors who can afford that endeavor for an investment? And like Todd said, the north, south, east, west corridor is very, goes 70 mile either direction, and look how this place is booming because of the north, south, east, and west corridors.
Thank you so much. This next question, we'll start with Jonathan. It is a one-minute answer, and there is a bit of framing around the question. Broadband is still lacking in parts of Allegheny County. Although Governor Hogan announced funding and a promise to have Maryland 100% covered by 2026, the geographic terrain and added costs to do so in some areas will serve as ongoing challenges to make that happen in the promised timeframe without a truly dedicated provider. Allegheny County, through its Connect Allegheny Grant Program, has taken some steps to bring difficult-to-reach areas online. As a necessary utility, what else can be done to get currently offline areas of the county connected?
There are several things that we could be doing to bring broadband to the area, and I like to kind of also elaborate on that. Working in healthcare, one of the most pressing issues with individuals in the area is telehealth access and not having broadband to make that happen. Besides expanding on the grant programs that Allegheny County is currently offering, one of the necessary services in the public safety sector is working with large companies like AT&amp;T and their FirstNet service to bring broadband access and connectivity to the area. So besides looking at hardwiring your house with a cable connection, there are other aspects such as satellite internet service capabilities, and you're working with AT&amp;T and large cellphone companies to bring cellular access to the hard-to-reach areas where it may be very cost-effective for areas like Old Town or that are live in a very rural setting. Also, just expanding on the grant program itself, I think making sure that we have a way to fund that properly and that it's readily available for the citizens in those areas to use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Oh, yeah. You know, I just sort of mentioned a little bit of this, and actually had a discussion about it earlier today. I think looking forward, I think right now, there's a few places in parts of Mount Savage and Old Town, but the county has taken great strides and taken a lot of money to add new additional towers to try to connect these areas. I think probably within the next year to two years, we want to make sure that every part of the county is covered, you know, has good broadband access. As I said, I think as of now, we've made enormous strides forward, but I think there's still some outlying areas and parts of Mount Savage and Old Town that we need to really work on. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Todd?
The county has made great strides in this area of expanding broadband access. Part of that was due to necessity through COVID. We all remember whenever schools were shut down, when businesses were shut down, you know, your kids stayed home and had to figure out how to go to school. There was, there were a lot of students, especially in outlying areas, in Rawlings, in Mount Savage, in Flintstone, in the lower Georgia's Creek area that were, that didn't have it. So there has been, there's been a significant push since COVID happened to improve that, and it has improved. I think going forward, to answer the question, what can be done is to not only utilize grant funding, but to try and redirect some economic development funding, whether that's the Senator Edwards Western Maryland Fund, whether that is some kind of utility development through the state, but to really lean on the state, which has promised us that this would be done, and lean on them to make the state keep their promise.
Thank you. David?
Although Connects has done a great job in Allegheny County, especially in the city of Carmel, but you get outside the city of Carmel, Allegheny County is very much like Garrett County. There's some very remote areas, there's some peaks and valleys, which the broadband internet getting, isn't getting there, and I think the simplest answer, I mean, I live out Bedford Road, and we really don't have, being that close to the city, a good broadband. We're limited, what we have being this close to the city of Carmel. So I think the question is, we need to private enterprise some of this. I have a friend who's actually in this endeavor, who's trying to private enterprise the broadband, and I think we need more of that to get out to these surrounding areas versus the big corporations and stuff with limited, and the funding and grants need to go to some of these private enterprises to increase our broadband availability in some of these outlying areas.
Thank you. Bill?
I think the key is creating those partnerships. As we know, the large companies aren't going to come out here to service our rural areas. There's just not enough money for them, but there's a lot of small companies there. Garrett County is doing a great job with the white space, using that technology, working with providers that can provide that service in rural areas. You don't need to build a huge 300-foot tower in order for that network to work. I think that's something we need to look at. I think there's some old cable networks that are out there that aren't being used anymore for cable TV that we can look at. So we need to start looking at other ways, other than just relying on, this is how broadband needs to expand. There's different ways that we can do that. There's different ways that we can look at, how do we put this together with a partnership with the private companies and the private entities to make that work? We'll tell you, again, traveling around with ARC, telehealth was a huge issue with broadband. We were able to give some funding to our local hospital to start that process of doing telehealth. So I think working together, using the funds that the county has and the start that they have already done, I think we can continue to get that to the rural areas.
Thank you. This next question, we will start with Dave Capirelli. It is a two-minute response. The consensus in our community is that we need industry, yet many of our local industries cannot hire local people. How do you propose we change the tide and work in better conjunction with residents to connect them to living wage jobs?
That's a very good question, because I know from conversations with, you know, Hunter Douglas, where they're always looking for people. Places like American Woodmark are always looking for employees. Having partnerships with these companies and potential job fairs, et cetera, but really getting people to the table that want to work and can fill these jobs. I think some other examples are businesses that are working with kids while they're still in high school and/or college through programs and apprenticeships that they will be able to fill positions upon graduation. I think one in particular actually has a program that they help pay your tuition. So upon graduation, not only do you have a job, but you have a place to work and a good career ahead of you. So I think between that, because there are a lot of places out there that are looking for people, I think we just have to connect the dots through education. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Education and workforce development are the answer to the worker's crisis or the labor difference in this area. We all agree that we need industry, as was stated in the question, but I think we need to expand our idea of what industry is. In the 21st century, industry is not just manufacturing blue-collar type work. While that is still present, and while that is a necessary thing, and we need workers for that, we need to expand the definition of industry to include technology-type jobs. And the key to that is workforce development. That's through the public schools, that is through working with the high schools and sending students to the Career Center, that is through sending students to Allegheny College. This building that we're sitting in, the Technology Building, is primed and ready to go for workforce training. So it is getting those kids started when they are coming through school and when they are deciding what they're going to do, preparing them with the skills that they need to be here, and then ensuring that the industry, the company that wants those workers, is here and can do that.
Thank you. David?
Well, this is a topic that I was pretty avid about four years ago, when the workforce training came into fruition when AB, or, yeah, when Wes Fager was going out. And, you know, at that time, I said, we were sitting in the continuing education building, and what are we doing for continuing education? Well, we need to get our students more evolved, and I don't know the answer to grooming them for like the VOTEC, and maybe look at the sources and go to the employers of the area and look at the job training, what they would expect out of a person coming out of high school. We have limited access to VOTEC. Maybe VOTEC could be expanded on a little bigger and maybe endeavor into some different things through the employers. Come, look at the employers, what their employers needs, and it goes back to education, but you know, you've got to groom this student from the start with proper training and get him out into the workforce, an available workforce that he enjoys going to work instead of sitting at home.
Thank you. Bill?
I mean, I think everyone said it, that it is workforce training. I think one of the things we need to look at is, we send our students from high school and middle school all over the state. They go to Annapolis, they go to Gettysburg, they go to Antietam. I think we need to have a day or two where they go out and they go into our industries, they go into our workforce, they find out what is out there, what is it, something they may like to do. When we talk about industry and the blue collars, it's totally different today than what it was when I was growing up. If you went to work in one of the factories years ago, it was manual hard labor. A lot of the labor now in industry is very high-tech. We need to introduce these kids to show them what it means to work in those type of industries, and I think taking them around and showing them what is out there, what's available, will help to get them a better understanding of what they want to do.
Some great answers already, and this is kind of a multifaceted response and a great question. You know, when I wanted to go to school, I'll be honest, Frostburg State wasn't my first thought. I truly wanted to go somewhere else where there was more business, there was more shopping, and there was more growth and expansion. And for me, finding a job in this area was quite challenging, even with an education. I think we had to take a look, step back, and look at our population loss and figuring out ways that we can retain our students and retain our population to fill some of these jobs. When you look at the census, we've lost 6,800 residents, that's 6,800 taxpayers, but not only is it that, it's 6,800 members of the community that could be employed by American Woodmark or by our school system or colleges. And so we have to look at that issue, and that kind of falls back into one of our previous questions, is addressing the housing issue and the broadband issue. Those are the facets and the foundation that we need to start with in order to solve some of the job crises that we have going on in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. This question, we'll start with Todd. It is a one-minute answer. Consolidation of economic development entities did not come to fruition, but collaboration between the city and county on certain projects has been successful, specifically Messick Road, the River Project, the Scenic Railroad. What are your thoughts on these current projects, and what is your vision for future, if elected?
I'm glad that the separate entities have been able to collaborate well. One of the things that I've said from the beginning is that I'm not interested in credit. I really don't care who stands in the picture to cut the ribbon for something as long as it gets done, so I'm really glad that they've been able to collaborate. As far as the River Walk and the other projects, I am an "and" person. I am in favor of tourism and education, and I am, we have the resources to do it all. I am absolutely in favor of any project that can be started and finished and start to reap back some of the resources that have been put into it. So if that means that the separate economic development entities are working well together, that is fantastic, and I'm happy to hear that. Like I said, I want to see projects finished. I want to see people employed. I want to see people spending money and moving in without caring who's in the picture to take credit.
Thank you. David?
Well, it's probably way past time that the entities came together. You know, Allegheny County has lived as two separate entities, the city of Carmel and the city of Frostburg, you know, and they need to join their forces and bring their, there's some very collective and thoughtful minds out there with some very good ideas, and they need to be brought together. And I think the Chamber's done a good job at bringing some of this stuff together and bringing the bodies together, which will bring some of these businesses in fruition, you know, just like the great Wolf Park they're talking out at Rocky Gap. Some people's going to be opposed, some people, but it's jobs, it's going to bring people here, it's going to bring more tourism dollars here, and I think it's, could be a great endeavor to the county, and it's hard to say what may come along with that, but you know, it's the cooperation of the city, county, governments, and municipalities working together to make a better county.
Well, I think those three projects you mentioned, the railroad, the river, and the Messick Road Project, really show what happens when we all do work together. Things get done. The railroad is doing one of its banner years. It's seeding. They are expanding what they do. There are different trains running. They have figured out that there are tourism attraction as well as a railroad. I think that's been a key to them turning things around. The River Project, we had a memo of understanding on that project that was signed by the city of Cumberland, the Allegheny County and Canal Place Development Authority. That's a partnership with three different entities working towards one goal. How do we get more access to the river? I think those type of things are going to continue to move forward. I think if we look at what needs to be done from a holistic point of view... view, I will tell you, the county can only grow and get so good if our cities and towns aren't growing and doing well also. So we have to coordinate that and collaborate on that, and again, use our resources wisely in working together.
I've always been a huge proponent of not reinventing the wheel, and when there's organizations doing great things, it's only important that you collaborate to further your goal and your mission. You know, the three projects that were mentioned, like we've all said, have been fantastic. I worked downtown Cumberland and going to work every day and meeting the new people, the fresh faces on the CNO Canal and the people that are boarding the railroad station, I get asked at least once a day, "Hey, where's the railroad at? What floor is it in the canal building?" And you know, that's fantastic to hear. And we need more collaboration and projects like that to further Allegheny County. We've mentioned before, tourism is a huge, huge revenue driver for Allegheny County, and we need to be thinking collaboratively and outside the box to bring some of these different projects to the area. And again, tourism and bringing these people to the area are ways that we drive our economy, and we raise more funds, and eventually also hopefully drive some people to want to live here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think one example that wasn't mentioned and actually did not come to fruition was the Clorox Project. There was enormous efforts from state, county, and city officials working on that project together. But that's what it takes for big projects like that to come to fruition. I think when it comes down to our apartments, I mean, you have to ask, are they working efficiently, and can we save money by potential consolidations? I mean, right now, it wasn't always like this. It wasn't always like it is now. Right now, we have constant contact with our partners, working partners at the city, and even weekly meetings with the CEDC. So I think, you know, having that working relationship, we have to have a responsibility to have that relationship, because we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I started with you, right, Todd?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, this question is a two-minute answer. This time, we'll start with David. "The housing market in Allegheny County has been targeted as one of the major issues influencing stagnant population, blight, and attracting middle-income employees. A comprehensive housing study was recently completed by the I-68 Regional Alliance, which further solidified these issues. Finding investors who will build middle-income housing in a rural area like this is going to be difficult. What types of programs or incentives might the county bring to the table to encourage someone to make that investment?"
Well, this goes back to the Chase property, it came up four years ago, and the county has a lot of money invested out there in that 220 project through the curbing and the purchases and acquisitions. And I had this conversation with constituent, you know, do we have the senior tax base in Allegheny County, as our population's client, to attract a major investor? And I mean, that is going to be a major investment for anybody, and any investor who looks at that is going to look at return on assets, you know, and do we have the population to do that, and what can we actually do to track? You know, it's going to come back to marketing, you know, we have to have good jobs before we can bring people here to a good affordable housing. So it's, that's kind of a double-edged sword there, you know. Were you going to put the cart before the horse, or what? You know, we need the housing to try to separate the two, to bring somebody in here and do away with the blighted properties and build middle-income, you know, we hear some, we hear things that some of the hospital and ATK work, who's moving to West Virginia for high-end housing. So, you know, I don't, you know, we have lots of places here we could attract people to in housing, but till we get a substantial workforce to be able to, for these people to afford these high-end houses, or even middle-sized houses. The housing market is a bust right now. I mean, there was a house in my area that just went for $100,000 over what it was 15 years ago. So I really don't have the answer to that one, but it's going to take economic development to make it work.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah. I think we need to look at several different ways of doing this, and again, it comes back to the whole thing I talked about is partnerships. You know, we need to get with our realtors to find out what is the needs. We know there's a need for senior housing, we know there's a need for workforce housing that's affordable, we know there's a need for types of condos and townhouses and those type of things. We know for what we've already built, that those high-end apartments are renting out faster than they can build them. So we need to look at ways that we can incentivize those programs and those partners and those developers in order to move that forward. I think government's role is to kickstart that program. Their return on investment rate now in Allegheny County is very marginal, so how can we work with them? I think we sit down with those local developers, see what their needs are, see what it would take in order for them to take on some of these projects and some of these areas that need it. But I think we really need to look at the mix and types of those that we need to do, and that's when we can get with our realtors and those type of people to find out what's going on. We've done a great job, and the county has, and with their blight removal, the City of Cumberland has done wonderful things with that. I think we now need to go back to those areas and find out how we can bring those communities back. Let's not just tear down the blighted property and walk away. Let's get with several of the people in this area that are flipping houses. Let's see what it takes to incentivize them for their margins to get to a community and rebuild it, so that those people can find places to live within a community that's already existing, and then work with the people who live there, who want to stay in that community, but maybe don't have the means to fix up their houses. Let's work with them and build this community by community, instead of just hot podge-podging, tearing out blighted properties and leaving them as they are.
This is a great question, and it's really multifaceted. Of course, partnerships and working with developers is key, but the one thing, again, that I mentioned earlier was, what brings development and developers to the area to want to build middle-income housing for individuals, and that's, again, having those safe neighborhoods. And, you know, that also starts, again, with the previous question we had, which is broadband. There has to be broadband access in areas where people want to develop houses. You know, one of the programs that the town of Westernport just started was a micro grant program for residents that wanted to improve the curb appeal of their houses. You could apply for a small amount of money to improve your houses and to improve some of the blight around the area. I think there's an opportunity maybe to do a larger-scale pilot project in that realm. You know, one of the things that people don't often think about, again, with not only middle-income housing, is when we have middle-income housing in the area, that really drives workers to come here and to work and to live and to raise a family, but there's a huge market too for economic development in bed and breakfast. You wouldn't imagine the amount of downtown Cumberland houses that are bed and breakfast in this area. Again, that boosts tourism. But again, you know, going back to the question itself, is really those partnerships with the landlords, making sure that any red tape that is up, that they can properly and safely and quickly construct the houses, and making sure that they want to develop. There's always an incentive we can look at with the people that are developing here currently, the landlords that are currently in the area, so that we can better tackle the middle-income housing crisis.
I think this is one that, you know, we need to really look around and see what type of areas that we can target. There's still a lot of wonderful homes that are in the area, but you can drive through these neighborhoods and see some of the homes that, you can tell that they, at one time, they were very nice homes, but they've been left to decay. How can we redevelop neighborhood by neighborhood, not just house by house? Going back to the senior aspect of this, there are a lot of people that I've known over the years, that they wind up moving away to live with their kids, or somewhere where they have access to a senior living facility, something that has maintenance-free single-story dwellings. We have a need for young professional apartments, we have a need for family dwellings. But I think two of the things that I know that we have going forward, particularly with the city, is Memorial Hospital site, and with the county, we're currently working up plans for the former Allegheny High School site. We had a conference call with a developer going back to a return on investment a while back, and they mentioned that as well, you know, that they don't get their return on investment up here as they would in Montgomery County. And my question was, well, in Montgomery County, are they going to give you the land, or, you know, almost give it to you for next to nothing to develop it? And the answer is no. So there are incentives, and there are reasons for people to look to develop up in Allegheny County.
I think one of the things that government can do, both at the county level and at the state level, is to sort of get out of the way of the private sector to do some of these developments. I mean, we see, we see regulations, whether they're environmental regulations, safety regulations, sprinklers, you know, we've talked about all these things that make it hard for development, and are just one more thing that gets in the way. I think one of the things that government can do is ease some of these regulations or work with developers, with construction, with new builders, to make it happen. Another thing that can be done is to make it easier to purchase and transfer land. I mean, we see lots, how many properties, we see page after page after page in the newspaper of properties that are up for tax sale, and there are folks that maybe would be interested in buying those, but my goodness, you need a calculus degree to figure out how to make an account and get into the virtual meeting and do this, and it's difficult. So making it easier for people who want to invest to be able to do so. We've talked about, earlier, we talked about sort of a sense of community. I think maybe one of the things that county government could do is work on some of the ancillary things in neighborhoods and communities that make those neighborhoods more attractive, things like if there's a park or a playground in that neighborhood, cleaning that up, paving streets, fixing sidewalks, working on, you know, safety things, dumping, putting more money into our volunteer fire companies and into our safety, into our utilities, reworking some of the older outdated utilities, the water systems in the cities, especially in Frostburg and in Cumberland, updating some of those things that are sort of adjacent to housing or adjacent to real estate, that will make the actual building process easier.
All right. Thank you. This is our last question, and we'll start back at the beginning again. It is a two-minute response. 2022 saw the passing of the Western Maryland Economic Future Investment Board and Fund, now named in honor of Senator Edwards. The fund will provide a key tool to all three western counties in attracting businesses and ultimately jobs. If elected, what would be your key focus in regard to economic development?
I don't know if you call it a key focus, but I think there's one focus, several that I'll mention, but one of the keys is, you know, you've heard everyone up here talking about tourism, and how tourism brings in those people from outside that spend money. But I'll tell you, from my experience and from my travels to ARC, tourism is a three-pronged stool. First, we're building these assets, the trail, the train, the river park, that's for us, that's for our citizens to use. That's an amenity that we have to sell as an economic tool. Secondly, it does bring in tourists, and they do spend money while they're here. We like that, they spend their money, they leave. But the third part of that stool, I think we need to focus a lot more on, is there is a whole lot of outdoor industry and recreational industry that would locate here because we have that outdoor recreation, because we have those assets. I traveled to Asheville, North Carolina, and everybody points to that area and say, "Look how great they've done things." I will tell you, we have more assets and more things going for us than Asheville does. They simply just put that as a priority and made ways to make it work. They connected the guy who creates kayaks with those young kids who like to kayak every day, and once a month, they meet and they give him ideas on how to improve his product. What a great idea to do that costs nothing. So I think that's one aspect. The other aspect is, we talk about how do we bring those tech folks here, how do we bring people back to our area? We already have a captive audience. Those students that graduated from Frostburg State University, when we surveyed them, they don't want to stay here after they graduate. They want to go home, make a name for themselves. But when they get to be 24, 25, start having kids, then they want to move back. So we already have a captive audience who already love this area. All we have to do is find them ways to bring them back, give them some incentives to come back, move here. When you can work from anywhere, this is the best place to work.
We talk a lot about living and working and playing in the area, and like I said, you know, one of the key focuses for me, when economic development, is looking at that tourism piece. And we mentioned it before, but you know, it's something that's very important, and Bill's right there, it's really a multi-pronged approach, but, you know, I can't tell you the amount of people that I talk to on a daily basis that would live in this area, again, if there is better housing and things to do and better broadband. And so looking at how we can expand on new projects, whether that would be with the downtown Cumberland, looking at the river, looking at how we can maybe help and redevelop and provide partnerships with the old Verso site, I think is key. And, you know, again, that outdoor space in Allegheny County is very special to a lot of individuals. You know, in addition, you know, I mentioned before, public safety, I think that that's a key start to economic development. It truly is that foundation. Again, bringing back that population to Allegheny County that we lost, you know, there's truly a huge issue there. Again, 6,800 individuals have left Allegheny County. What does that really mean? Not only is that, again, people that fill jobs, that's taxpayers and tax revenue, that really generate the economy, and that all starts with safety. You know, that last portion, again, not only just working in healthcare, but having a passion. How can we reinvest in our healthcare system? You know, people don't often think of Allegheny County being a very large homeless population, but we do have a quite large homeless population in the area. We have a very high mental health crisis in the area, and working with some of our healthcare partners, the Health Department and the hospital systems to improve our healthcare base will help drive some of our economic development as well.
I want to be a part of this going forward. I hope to be a part of this conversation. This is something that is a one-time opportunity, and I definitely want to make sure that we see that it makes a lasting impact on the county, that it'll be felt for years or decades, whether it be strategic land acquisition, having infrastructure ready for businesses to move in, incentives for businesses and housing to come into our area, finishing some of the broadband that we're looking at, possible incentives for tech, biotech, or cybersecurity. Everything ties together. I hope that whatever, like I said, we have with the Economic Development Fund, that it'll make a lasting impact on Allegheny County for years to come.
Thank you. Todd?
There's an old saying that perfect is the enemy of pretty good, and I think that for a long time, there have been, there's been sort of an understanding or a belief that if something's not exactly the right fit, we kind of have an idea of what we want. So the county maybe, you know, will front the money to put up a building, or will be in talks with one particular company for something, but if it's not exactly what we want, then we kind of act that we're disinterested. And I think that we need to be aware and understanding that any viable business needs to be encouraged and needs to be worked with to be able to come in. We need to take some of the things that are liabilities on the county's books right now, some of these empty buildings, some of the land that we own, some of the things that the county is responsible for, and turn those into assets, or even better, into equity, that the county can use to make this $50 million that's coming in self-sustaining and to be able to last itself. There's no such thing in my mind as the wrong business. Any business, as long as the product or service that they offer is legal, and they're going to pay taxes, and they're going to employ people, it's the right business for Allegheny County. And whether that means old-style manufacturing, whether that means robotics, whether that means healthcare industry, education expansion, technology, cyber, whatever it is, if they're interested in Allegheny County, we're interested in them too.
Thank you. David?
Okay, my biggest, and you're probably think I'm repeating myself, is once again, we need, we have a lot of money invested in the Barton Industrial Park out there, in that building that's sitting idle, which is a big burden to the county taxpayer right now. The economic development of Allegheny County needs to do something to that building. I mean, it's, I'm going to say roughly probably an $8 million investment sitting there. The Chase property is another, how many million-dollar investments sitting there? And we're back to on that north, south, east, west corridor. That's a north-south corridor there. There's a lot of truck traffic there. You know, we just had a company leave Cumberland and moved a Kaiser, you know, for certain reasons, who knows why. I'm sure the people in this room know why. But you know, the economic development of some of these lands that the building owns, you know, when FedEx is done with their thing, that's the unification there of FedEx Ground and FedEx Express here, that's going to be an empty building on Lane Avenue. There's going to be another empty building on Lexington Avenue when FedEx leaves there. So, you know, we need to, economic development needs to go and look at what we're going to do with some of these excess properties that's going to be on the books to create a tax base and maybe bring employees into them. Thank you.
Thank you. The final question is an opportunity for you to make closing remarks, and you'll have two minutes for those, and we'll just go ahead and start at the beginning again with you, Bill.
Well, in closing, I want to let the local businesses and industries know that one of my key points will be to help them grow. We have a lot of great industry and business in this area, a lot of them are struggling just to grow themselves. How can we help and grow from within? That's the first part of growing your population, is growing what you already have, growing your existing businesses. That will help to stabilize our population as much as bringing in any other new business. So I think we really need to work with our existing businesses. We've seen quite a few of them grow as we have. The good thing about those industries, when you grow your locally grown industries, they don't leave. They were born and raised here, they stay here. They're not like some other industries that may come and may go. As an elected official, I will work tirelessly to bring what the citizens of this county want, what their priorities are. We will look at public safety. I do think that is something we have to address. I think the I think the housing is something that definitely needs to be addressed in the mix of the housing that we have. But I bring a lot of experience. I know how government works, worked at it for more than 30 years. I've seen where those hurdles become, where things get slowed down, where things stop. And I think we can work through that because I know and have an understanding. I've worked with many of all the facilities and different agencies downstate. So I know and have those connections that we can talk and have those. There has to be partnerships, not only locally, but we have to get a partnership with our representatives downstate. We know that we're in the minority as Republicans up here, but we have to get along with the Democrats downstate and let them know what we want, what we need, and how can they help us to make this the best place? And we've all said it, we love it here, we want to live here, we want to play here, we want to work here. Thank you.
You know, one word I want to bring up in my closing remarks is change. And I think that change is a scary word to a lot of individuals, but I truly think that bringing new and exciting ideas to the table is going to be key for Allegheny County's success moving forward. Again, with my background in healthcare, marketing communications and working with large-scale budgets, I think that I can bring a lot of expertise helping to balance the county budgets. I think one of the first things we need to do is kind of look at our departments and seeing where there are some efficiencies that we can improve upon. I think that my existing partnerships and relationships with a lot of different senators and delegates and legislators downstate and with other departments within the state of Maryland and across the nation, I think will be vital to our success moving forward. Allegheny County needs to have those partnerships in order to advance our, our network and to grow us on the map and put us on the map. Again, I think my priorities are focusing on population loss and growth with all the different aspects that that brings apart, I think is going to be essential as we move forward. And again, my background in public safety, I think is, is going to bring some fresh insights to some of the challenges and issues that the county is facing. And again, the dedicated public servant in me, everything that I put forth is with 110% effort and I truly will put that effort forward if elected on July 19th. Thank you.
I feel we've had many successes over the past four years. There's many projects to finish. We've lowered taxes. The FedEx is a huge plus for the, for Allegheny County. But for more than that, there are a lot of businesses that are expanding. They've been here, they've lived here, they've worked here, and they're looking to expand their business and reinvest in our community. Places like Grow West, BSI, Sierra Hygiene, American Woodmark and Hunter Douglas, to name a few. But that, that's encouraging because these people see what we see and they want to continue to be here and be part of our community. I've been proud to be your county commissioner. I'm asking for your vote again on July 19th. And thank you for, everybody for having us tonight. Take care and good night.
In closing, I'd like to just say that I'm, I'm here to work for Allegheny County in whatever way is going to be the best for the citizens of this county. I am interested in seeing more people lay their head down at night and call Allegheny County their home. I love this place, as does everyone in this room. We all know people that grew up here that, that moved away for economic opportunity and we'd love to see those people come back. We would love to see other people come back. We, we believe in this area and we want other people to see why we believe in it and why we love it. And that's, that's why I'm running. So on July 19th, I, I ask you to trust me with your vote. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the, the chamber and everybody for having us this evening. I think my business aspect, being in business for myself and working for a company in this area for 30 some years would be an asset to bring to the county table. I have some fresh ideas, some good ideas. I have a retirement that I'm not quite ready for yet, but economic development is the key to a lot of things. We, we can talk about the water park, the water park, water brings people. People brings tourism. But economic development, jobs bring houses and brings people also that will stay here and spend their tax dollars in Allegheny County that we not only may be able to sustain our tax base, but maybe cut it, you know, like the commissioners did this year, you know. We're sitting on top of some revenue now as county commissioners, which is the taxpayers' revenue, and maybe we could utilize some of that into doing some, getting back out to these employers who's looking for people and find out what we can do through job placement, employee training or what, to help them succeed and try to keep these 6,800 people who's leaving this area to find substantial jobs here. And it'll bring housing and everything else with it.
Thank you. Thank you so much to Ryan and Katie Brenneman at Allegheny Media and to Chuck Dickens at WFWM for their partnership. And thank you to Jeremy with our legislative committee. The chamber could not bring this together without all of your talent and expertise. And thank you to our candidates for joining us and I wish you all luck. Early voting begins July 7th and will run through July 14th. Election day is July 19th and you must vote at your assigned polling place. You can find all of this information at elections.maryland.gov. As a reminder, WFWM will air this on their radio station on Tuesday, July 5th at 6:00 PM. The Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce encourages everyone to vote and to make informed decisions. Thank you and good night.